Welcome to the first of its kind event for Hugo, the candidate forum for the upcoming city council election on Tuesday, April 1st. I am Colby Bryant and with the help of the Hugo Middle School video team, we're thrilled to be able to bring to you your candidates. In the coming days, early voting will begin, and just over seven days from the time of this recording, we will have the results of the city council election for wards three, four, and at-large council members. Growing up, my grandmother Shirley Bryant was the Choctaw County Tax Assessor, and some of my fondest memories with her were on the local campaign trail. And believe it or not, there was a lot more moving and shaking going on in this area back then. I distinctly remember going to various campaign events throughout election season, and back then, speeches were given on the courthouse lawn and throughout the county. It seemed like people were more invested in their local representatives and elected officials back then. And while my grandmother sadly passed away last summer, and many that I met in those events have also passed on, we're all still here. Elections often fly by with few running, and in many cases, only one person will step up to do so. I've been a fairly active observer of city council meetings since moving back within city limits several years back. However, truth be told, there have been many meetings where I've been the only citizen there that didn't have to be there. And frankly, it's been disappointing for a long time for me, as I've always hoped for more civic engagement in this area that I call home. An overwhelming sense of apathy has taken hold in this town, and that lack of care from voters does no one any good. That's the purpose of tonight's event. I want the people of Hugo to care more about their local government and to know the people that they elect. If you live in one of the four wards in Hugo, you should know your councilperson. And regardless of which ward you live in, you should know your at-large councilperson. Since 2020, though, so much has changed in our daily life and our interactions. It makes it much more difficult to meet people because we all just don't get out like we used to. The most efficient way for the candidates in this election to get in front of people isn't by physically knocking on every door. Instead, they can meet you all tonight by way of this video. Some may be watching live, but I reckon that more will see it in the days after filming. Some of you know at this moment who you will vote for, while some of you have absolutely no idea and are looking to be convinced. But regardless of how you watch it or how you plan to vote, I ask every eligible voter of Hugo to listen to the plans of each of these candidates tonight and show up to vote. As we begin this event, I personally am not endorsing any of these candidates over any of the others, but I am urging the city of Hugo to do just one thing and one thing only: care. Care about your city, care about who you have representing you, and care enough to let that representation know how you feel in constructive ways. Each of the candidates will be given up to five minutes to speak. And while there may be comments made on YouTube links or the posts that people will share of this video, there will be no live questions from the audience garnered from them tonight. But what is said will be the choice of each of the candidates speaking, theirs alone. Whether a candidate speaks the entire time allotted to them is entirely up to them, but I will only be cutting off a candidate if they go over the time allowed. Each will receive a one-minute warning to avoid this from happening. But beyond that, I ask that the candidates, a mix of newcomers and incumbent councilpersons, do their best to keep their speeches on the point of their own plans for each role. I also politely ask that candidates not openly disparage their opponents or candidates in other races with their speeches with any personal mudslinging. My main point is this: Tonight is hosted by the Hugo Middle School Video Production Class's YouTube channel, so to our viewers and to our candidates, please keep everything civil. Tonight, we will first hear from our candidates in Ward Three alphabetically. We are thankful for our current Ward Three Councilperson, Wantie Lattimore, and her time served, but as she's decided to not run again in the upcoming election, all three of these candidates will be newcomers to this position. We have tonight Gary Brownsworth, Carolyn Hicks, and Robbie Ridenhour.
Good evening. I'm Gary Brownsworth, and I'm running for City Council for Hugo, Ward Three. First, I would like to tell you a little about myself. I grew up in the small town of Okeen in northwest Oklahoma. My dad worked for the Okeen Milling Company for over 42 years. We also farmed, wheat, raised sheep eggs and cattle, in addition to other side jobs. I watched my father serve as a volunteer firefighter for 20 years, and after retirement, he served on the Okeem City Council and served as mayor for several years. We knew the value of hard work and public service. I went to college at Northwestern Oklahoma State University in Alva, majoring in law enforcement. After graduation, I stayed in Okeem farming and working at various jobs, including working part-time for the town of Okeem. Also served as a volunteer EMT with Okeem EMS, until I pursued my calling to become an attorney by attending law school at Oklahoma City University School of Law. Later, I was offered a job with a nonprofit law firm in Hugo and moved here in September of 1999. I never thought I would still be here 25 years later. At that time, I still considered Okeem my home, but then I met my wife Kara, a teacher, and we raised our three children here in Hugo. Now, Okeem is simply the town I grew up in. Hugo is my home. Later, while in private practice, I served as a city attorney for Hugo Antlers &amp; 4000. In December 2015, I received an offer to return to my former nonprofit law firm as the managing attorney and had been employed there since that time, overseeing an office of several other attorneys and support staff in addition to serving our clients. I decided to run for city council because I want Hugo to be the best it can be. Now that our youngest is graduating high school, I feel that I have more time to commit to serving the community. My focus will be on addressing our city's top priorities to ensure Hugo's continued growth and attractiveness as a place to live. I approached this position with no personal agendas, but with a firm belief in the potential for continuous improvement and increased efficiency in all aspects of city government. My goal is to work together with fellow councilmembers to serve as, to advance the best interest of Hugo. I firmly believe that Hugo's main priorities must be its core infrastructure and public safety. These include essential services such as water, sewer, streets, police, fire, and code enforcement. These are fundamental to the well-being and functionality of our community. The limited time in this presentation makes it difficult to expand on many issues, but working to improve Hugo's water and sewer system is a must. Also, street repair and replacement are high on the needs of Hugo. Working to make our police and fire departments be the best they can be are also priorities. Neglected properties, trash, and overgrown yards are another problem Hugo faces and needs improvement. In addition, working to attract businesses and growth to our community must continue. Our city council serves as caretakers for our community, entrusted with the responsibility of safeguarding the city's well-being. They have a fiduciary duty to make sure that the taxpayer money is used wisely and for the best interests of the city. In addition, it is their job to work with residents to plan for the future of the city, work toward improvements, and promote public safety, economic strength, and quality of life. I recognize that no single individual has all the answers. However, if elected, I pledge to serve with unwavering dedication to Hugo's well-being and to conduct myself with complete transparency and integrity in all my actions. I want to work with other members of the council for the betterment of Hugo. My previous experience as a city attorney has provided me with a wide-ranging understanding of the legal requirements governing municipal operations and the many issues that affect our cities in our area. Some of those matters I've dealt with have included drafting ordinances, contracts, working on zoning issues, DEQ, insurance, bonds, inter-local agreements, and many more issues. I have attended numerous council meetings in the past and have previously attended municipal trainings. I have a proven track record of working effectively with city councils and city managers to serve the community's best interest. I will be available to the residents of Hugo to discuss concerns or ideas that they may have. I believe in open communication and respectful discussion. I prefer direct one-on-one conversations to enable meaningful discussion. Working with all residents is essential to serving the community effectively. I want to thank Colby Bryant, the others responsible for setting up this event, especially thank you to the Hugo Middle School of teachers and students for producing this event. And also, we'd like to recognize and thank the other members of the council for their time and effort in running for council. In closing, I would urge people to get out and vote, and most importantly, voting is a sacred right. Many people sacrificed when we could do so. Please get out and vote. I ask for your vote for City Council, Ward Three. Thank you.
Great, great. I'm Carolyn, and I'm going to speak on this evening on behalf of the citizens of Hugo, Oklahoma. It's not about me, but it's about the people in Hugo. And the things that I'm concerned about and would like to see better is things, jobs in the city, the city streets, something for our children to have their time for them to do. But the main thing is us coming together and putting a plan together to work things out in the cities so our children won't inherit something that hasn't been finished. We've got streets that need to be paved. We've got buildings downtown that need to be refinished. We've got things that we need to put in place for our children. And my heart is for the city. It's for the city in my heart. And the city's not at my heart. The city's in my heart. Our youth is not at my heart, but they're in my heart. And I feel like if we come together in unity and come as one and fix a plan out and then continue the plan that, and just work it together, we would do so much more in this city because it's a lot to be done. And I really don't want the children of the next generation to have to come in and finish fixing what we can do right now. Thank you so much.
Hello. My name is Robbie Ridenhour, and I'm announcing my candidacy for City Council, Ward Three. I will keep my remarks brief, straightforward, and transparent. Four years ago, our town was maintaining. It was starting to thrive with visible improvements and developments underway. Houses were being demolished and removed. Vacant lots filled with abandoned trailers and trash were being cleaned up and disposed of. All the needed equipment was purchased for the street repairs that were being done. And our water issue was also being addressed. We had even successfully exited a consent order that had been in place for several years that was very costly to this town. However, in just four short years, that consent order is once again a concern due to neglected sewage issues. Homes are experiencing sewage backups, and citizens are falling ill as a result from such issues. Many city streets have deteriorated to the point of being impassable, with numerous potholes causing damage to vehicles. Water breaks, water line breaks are occurring throughout our whole town. There is not one side of town that there is not water oozing down the driveway. Some of these water line breaks are even causing property damages for business owners. Our once thriving downtown area has become a virtual ghost town with dilapidated buildings and sidewalks. The proliferation of vacant, rundown, falling down, and some even dangerous buildings that were once successful businesses is a significant concern. Number one concern is the well-being and safety of our citizens and some businesses near these dilapidated buildings. And then the number two concern is our once prosperous and prideful core of our town being our downtown. Furthermore, the proposal to sell our water supply is utterly unacceptable. This should have never even been considered to be sold. We must take a firm stance to protect our water supply. I don't even know how to put into words how ridiculous this subject is. I am a lifelong resident of Hugo, where I raised my three children, and now have the pleasure of watching my grandchildren grow in a town with such heartwarming memories. I tell them stories of this town from when I was younger, and I want my grandchildren to share similar stories to their children. But unless change is made within the management of our town, there will be no stories for my grandchildren to tell. I am deeply invested in the well-being and prosperity of this community, and I firmly believe that its continued growth and success necessitates throughout change. And to be brutally honest, the only changes in the past four years has actually been setbacks of 20 years: decline in finances, decline in infrastructure, decline in population, and decline in the pride of this town. I'm also an owner of a successful business that was started by my in-laws over 30 years ago. My husband and I run the business solely now, so I do have the feel of running a successful business and want to one day pass that along to my kids and then theirs. So therefore, me and mine are here to stay, and we do care and want positive changes to help Hugo grow. But in order to do so, you, the citizens of Hugo, have to vote so these positive changes can be made. So let's keep our water. Let's repair numerous outstanding water and sewage issues. Let's make downtown beautiful and prosperous again. Those are just a few of the items that need our immediate attention. If I am elected, I will be accessible and open to each and every citizen of this town. I will listen to every concern you may have, any concerns that you may have, because if elected, I work for you, not only for the people in my ward, but all wards. So on April 1st, kindly request, I kindly request your vote for the City Council, Ward Three. I am committed to working diligently to ensure Hugo's future prosperity. So once again, I am Robbie Ridenhour, and I am running for City Council, Ward Three. Thank you.
Thank you to each of our Ward Three candidates for participating in tonight's event. Next up, we will have our candidates in Ward Four. We will begin with our incumbent Tina Bunne and follow with Curtis Hall.
Hello. My name is Tina Bunne, and I am running for City Council, Ward Four. I have lived in Hugo all my life. In 1975, my parents built their business, Hicks Auto Savage in Hugo. In 1987, I married my husband Joe, and we raised two wonderful children, Kenny and Heather Bunne, who both graduated from Hugo High School. When my father became very ill 24 years ago, Joe and I became business owners, and we are still up and running today. Our hope is that our business will be passed down from generations to come and in a healthy and successful town. I have noticed for many years that our town has been deteriorating and going downhill. I've had conversations with residents who are having sewer issues that back up into their homes when it rains. They have asked for their sewers to be fixed, but to no avail. Having witnessed these issues myself, I believe that the best way to fix these problems was to become part of the solution by becoming a city council member. We have major issues all over Hugo, and over the past two years, I have advocated to have these issues fixed for our residents. My top priorities start with fixing our infrastructure, which includes sewer, water lines, and streets. My goal is to revitalize downtown, our downtown, so we can draw industry to our community and bring back businesses to our downtown area. Therefore, saving our water supply from being sold is just the start in the process of saving our town. Ensuring our residents have a voice in the decision-making process is vital to our city. I would like to include town hall meetings along with our city council meetings so we can understand the priorities of our community. I believe it will take an open and honest two-way relationship between the residents and the council to make a positive difference in Hugo. I will continue to be transparent and open about what I'm trying to accomplish for the city and its residents. During my past two years on the council, I have had the opportunity to attend Oklahoma Municipal League classes, which included grants and balancing budgets. My business experience has given me the knowledge to understand that the city, as well as the business goals, are very similar in how they operate. Hugo is my home, and I've had a lot invested in Hugo. I want to see improvements in all areas of our community, and I'm willing to work to get that done. I care about our town and our residents. Running for city council for a second term, I will continue the quest to make Hugo safe, healthy, and thriving again. I will not only fight for the residents of my ward, but for all the residents of Hugo. Please make your voice heard and vote for a better future for Hugo on April 1st. I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Curtis Hall, and I'm running for Hugo City Council, Ward Four. I've lived in Hugo for the majority of my life. My parents lived here most of their lives. My brothers and sister, most of my family has called this town home. I was even born in the hospital here. Needless to say, I have deep roots in this community. While I've worked away from Hugo for short periods of time, I've always returned to my home. This is where my heart is. So why do I want to work on the city council? Well, I'll tell you. My father worked construction on the Turnpike, and that brought him to Hugo. Here, he met my mother, and they married. He and my brothers all worked at Campbell's Soup in Paris until their retirement. They lived in a community they felt was worth living in. And I have a family of my own: my wonderful wife Serena, my daughter Alyssa, and my son Bennett. And I too want to raise my family in a community that's worth living in. I believe Hugo is that place, and I want to help ensure that it remains a place we're all proud to call home. Now, what do I have to offer this great city? Well, given my deep roots here, my family's commitment to Hugo, and my experience as a registered nurse for the last 25 years, I believe I bring valuable skills to the table. Being a nurse has taught me how to assess situations, solve problems, and communicate effectively, skills I use daily and skills that are just as crucial in serving our community through city government. I'm eager to put these skills to work alongside the other council members to address the challenges we face. If elected, I look forward to working with the rest of the council to find sustainable, affordable solutions to the issues that matter most to you. As a lifelong resident, I'm deeply familiar with Hugo's strengths and its challenges. One issue I hear time and time again from residents is the state of our water delivery and sewer systems. We all agree that these are top priorities, and I am committed to working on solutions that ensure our infrastructure serves us now and into the future. I believe we can build a Hugo that is not just worth living in, but a community that thrives. Together, we can make Hugo a place where families can grow, businesses thrive, and everyone feels proud to call home. So thank you for your time, your support, and your commitment to this great town, and I humbly ask for your vote in this upcoming election. Yakoki, and God bless Hugo.
Thanks to both of our Ward Four candidates for participating in tonight's event. In our last set of candidates, we have those running for at-large councilperson. We will begin with our incumbent Darren Frazier, followed alphabetically by Dr. Charles Elswich and John Wirick.
Hello. My name is Darren Frazier.
Hello, my name is Darren Frazier. And I'm running for reelection for Hugo City Council at large. I was born and raised in Hugo, and I'm a 1987 Hugo High School graduate. My wife Michelle is an active community volunteer and career counselor for Choctaw Nation Career Development here in District Eight. I've been a lineman for Choctaw Electric Cooperative for the past 30 years and a construction foreman for the last 21 of those years. Michelle and I have three children. Josie's a 2019 Hugo High School graduate and also graduated from Southeastern in 2022 with an English education degree. Our son Connor is a 2025 Hugo Buffalo, and our daughter Lily is a first grader at Hugo Elementary. I'd like to talk about some concerns that many citizens have shared with me as well as my reasons for running for reelection. I've heard concerns from many citizens about our Main Street downtown area regarding the number of dispensaries located there. It's a very common concern across Oklahoma and one that many towns are experiencing. Our local ordinances can't supersede a state law, and these are businesses with the appropriate licenses to operate. Because of that, I believe our focus should be on revitalizing the buildings in that area through grants and community projects to bring new businesses to the downtown area. Recently, the Hugo Industrial Authority met with JTS Financial Contract Management to explore entering a service agreement for grant-writing services for the authority. I believe it would be beneficial to the city to explore a similar agreement to seek grants and identify projects that would grow and beautify our downtown area. I think a stronger social media presence, pardon, and virtual access to meetings would be beneficial to our citizens. And as always, citizens should feel that they can approach their councilpersons with concerns and questions anytime. I strongly advocate for transparency in government, and I've always asked citizens to attend meetings and be more involved with their local government. Independent audits of the city's finances have been favorable for several years. Earlier this year, the Choctaw County Industrial Authority hosted community visiting meetings. This was a project sponsored by the Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma and the Public Service Company of Oklahoma. The action plan that resulted from these community planning meetings was prepared by David Myers and is a starting place for our community to come together to improve our economic development. That can only happen if we work together. And I would really like to see the city of Hugo, Choctaw County, Choctaw Nation, the Chamber of Commerce, and both the Hugo and Choctaw County Industrial Authorities and other community partners work together to carry out the economic development plan. It was part of seeking new funding for the city that the discussion began about the possible sale of excess water. Unfortunately, the real information about discussion was twisted, and misinformation was shared. But, go ahead, go ahead. I was appointed to a committee to determine if it was a viable option to sell excess water from Hugo Lake. There was never an agreement made other than to enter into a discussion called a memorandum of understanding and to bring in all interested parties to determine if it was even an option. After the open meeting with Choctaw Nation and other interested parties, it's an easy answer for me, very simply, no, it's not an option. As a council, our role is to set policies and improve expenditures, but most importantly, to listen to the concerns of citizens and represent the best interests of our citizens. With my experience on the council and after attending several Oklahoma Municipal League trainings, I believe that I can seamlessly continue the role as councilperson. I have knowledge and experience with the Oklahoma Meeting Act, with city law and ordinances, and with city budgeting. As a councilperson, I understand there is adversity to face and hard decisions that have to be made. I've always tried to do what was best for the citizens of Hugo and the city of Hugo. I'm seeking reelection because I love this community. I was born and raised in Hugo. And after traveling all over the United States with the circus, I always knew I wanted to come home to raise my family. My family's lives, jobs, and home were here. Every decision the council makes is one that affects me and my family, just like it affects yours. Thank you. And thank you to Hugo Middle School and the students that chose to stay late to put this on for us.
Hello, I'm Dr. Charles Elswich. Most people here in town just know me as Dr. Schuck. I moved to Hugo 40 years ago. Came here as a retiree. And however, shortly after we got here, the company I retired from went bankrupt, so I lost my retirement and had to start over. I have a great hunger to serve this city. Because shortly after we moved here, my brother-in-law passed away, and we didn't have the money to bury him. And for some reason or other, an organization that to this day, they will not tell me who it was, came up with the money to help us bury my brother-in-law. So I have always spent my time serving the city of Hugo. If you'll remember 30 years ago, the gazebo that was built at the train station, they couldn't get anybody to build it. So when I was in Dallas, I was in the construction business, so I built it myself at no cost. Shortly after that time, at my age, I went back to college. And while I was in college, I had to have a job, so I, for 28 years, carried the mail here in Hugo. I served on three boards in Hugo. I feel that I have an obligation to serve Hugo. When I first moved here, I was told, if you're not born here, you're not from here. So I've been striving to become a good resident. I'm rather successful in my business. I opened a business 10 years ago here in Hugo, and it was about herbals and natural health. Most people don't know much about it, but we have become very successful. Our company has reached the point where we are totally debt-free. And it doesn't take very many people that are able to do that. And that's my goal if I'm elected to the council, to make Hugo debt-free. Beyond that, I'm always available. I thank the junior high school for letting us speak. Anyone has any questions, I'm always at the store to answer their questions. Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Wirick. I am running for this Hugo City Council candidate at-large position. I was born and raised here in Hugo 55 years ago. And in this town, raised my whole life. I retained a residence for over 50 years. After high school graduating from Hugo, I went to the United States Military. Four years with the Army, four years with the Navy, where I got experience in plumbing, heating, and air conditioning, electrical, all phases of industrial environments. After serving in the service, I come back home. I went to work doing plumbing, heating, and air work. I've been working for, currently have been working for myself for the past 15 years with my own company, the Works Plumbing, Heat &amp; Air, where I've worked alongside the people here with the city of Hugo and the residents here. I am looking at running for council with the city of Hugo because this is my home. I'm not a politician. I'm just someone who knows what needs to be done. We have issues with our sewer, our water, our streets. We have issues with animal control. We have issues with various things. And I want to make the city back the way it was whenever I was a child, where a child could walk down the streets and not worry about anything. We have issues with drugs up and down the streets. We need to fix all that. We need to fix the law enforcement. I have a background in law enforcement as a military police officer. Other things I have in mind were to work with the city employees and find out what's wrong with the system to them. I already talked to various members of the society here in Hugo, where we want to fix, they want this fixed, that fixed. I'm just one of, I'm one of the people. I know nothing else. I have no college degree. I just have a military background, and I'm experienced in what we do. I work with the DEQ, the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, and other agencies throughout the state for water and sewer. And all I can do is ask you for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you to all three of our at-large candidates for participating in tonight's event. And there we have it. We have heard from those running. The only thing left to do now is to vote. Early voting will be held at the courthouse later this week. And of course, Election Day is next Tuesday, April 1st. But let's be clear, Hugo voters will be voting for all three positions, regardless of which ward you actually live in. So with that in mind, I hope that what was shared tonight will be helpful to you all. I want to thank Ms. Taylor Perry of the Hugo Middle School and her video production students. Without them, this event would not have been possible without their assistance. So please, like and subscribe to this YouTube channel you're watching on, the Buffalo News Hugo Middle School on YouTube, to be able to see the incredible things that are happening here at Hugo Middle School. That's youtube.com/hugobuffalos. There you'll find their live streams and coverage of the HMS award-winning esports team. They're doing a lot to make Hugo proud, and they deserve all the support they can get. Thank you to all that are watching, and we hope to see you all turn out to vote.